People here, I do believe, yes, there we go. Councilman Potoka is reappointing Ms. Deborah Dopkin. Is up. Can I see Potoka here? Yeah, he's here. Okay, would you like to say a few words? We certainly appreciate your service. And we're happy that Councilman Potoka is reappointing you if he wants to say a few words. I don't see him. I see his name. Just stop this, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to serve and I'm flattered to be reappointed. And hope that that I and the other members who are up for reappointment don't disappoint you as we go forward. We never know what kind of cases we're going to be dealing with.
Did um, I sent a link, a panelist link. I can see her on the attendee list, but
mute yourself.
Oh my god.
Okay. We certainly appreciate the service. You and the other members of the Board of Appeals certainly have not disappointed us. And we recognize the service you perform and we're very grateful for that.
I do want to add that both Mr. Evans and Mr. Belt have served longer than I have. And I think Mr. Belt at the moment is tied up in a hearing as we speak. So he's just working for you right now.
Okay, fantastic.
And Mr. Chairman, first, sorry about the interruption. And second, second, unfortunately, the invites to Mr. Bell and Mr. Evans did go out a little bit late, actually, not until yesterday. So hopefully they can be there for the legislative session on Monday, but I thought, you know, they might be hit or miss for today. But as Ms. Dopkin indicated, they have both served for quite a few years. Mr. Belt appointed by Mr. Marx and Mr. Evans by Mr. Catch. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to Mr. Belt, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Marx.
So thank you. As Ms. Dopkin mentioned, Mr. Belt is one of the senior members of the Board of Appeals. He was actually appointed by my predecessor in Scardino. And when I had the decision about whether to reappoint him, I asked attorneys who were active in the development community, but also attorneys who represented a lot of community interests. And they they both uniformly said he was very fair, very hard worker. I sound like a broken record here, but I'm very proud of my father's service on the Board of Appeals. And I've always wanted my member to be in that tradition. And Andy Belt is certainly that type of person. So it's my pleasure to reappoint him.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilman Marx. Councilman Catch? You're muted, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I'm very proud to reappoint Joe Evans to the Board of Appeals. He is a retired federal employee. He was both a worked in the Public Defender's Office for the federal government and the prosecution for the federal government. So he has a unique view of the law, having come from both sides. He is very fair, very deliberate, and a very hardworking individual. So anyhow, I'm very proud to ask for his reappointment.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Councilman Potoka, if you wanted to say anything about your reappointment, Ms. Dopkin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize to you and the members and the participants still suffering from some technical difficulties. I was logging on and just as I was on, it bumped me out. And so I'm not sure exactly the nature of the technical difficulties, but nonetheless, I'm delighted to be here and I'm especially delighted to speak on behalf of Deborah Dopkin, who is an outstanding attorney. When I first came on and just a solid thinker. When I first came on board as a council member, Ms. Dopkin asked to meet with me and I was so impressed that I knew in the first five minutes that I was going to affirm her reappointment. She was originally appointed, I believe, by Councilwoman Allman. Is that correct, Ms. Dopkin? And I was lucky enough to have Ms. Dopkin roll over while I was elected to council and just delighted that she's she was willing to serve the public again. And I can't think of anyone better in the second district that I would like to have on the Board of Appeals other than Deborah Dopkin. So thank you so much, Ms. Dopkin.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we certainly appreciate this, sir. Now we move on to Ms. Deb Schindel, property management. Contract with Sports Lab. Ms. Schindel? Okay, Ms. Schindel is working. We will
I'm sorry, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. I am so sorry.
It's all right, we're on page 10.
You got it. Property management and administration is requesting the approval of a contract for Sports Lab LLC to provide one Gmax test per year for synthetic turf fields listed and provided a written report of the test results at various county and operated facilities within the boundaries of Baltimore County, Maryland. Additional synthetic fields may be added at the same cost per test on this contract. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of $67,000 the entire term of the contract. This is a contract that was competitively bid. There were three vendors. This was the lowest and most qualified bidder. Just for information, we have 31 turf fields that we do Gmax testing on. It is a safety issue for us. So we use Gmax testing to ensure that it is a safe environment for our rec and Baltimore County citizens to utilize. And it also helps us to gauge the performance of the actual turf field itself and helps us build our capital program so that we know when we should be looking at replacing these synthetic turf fields. This contract is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. Is there any questions on this contract?
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Schindel.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. We'll move on to page 14, Mr. David Lyken, our midgits general.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and members of the council. It is my pleasure, along with the county administration, to present a contract to you with helicopter applicators in partnership with the Maryland Department of Agriculture and Secretary Joe Barton Felder. In 2017, we first tried to address the midge issue with BTI, which is a larvicide, which, when applied to the water, sinks to the bottom and kills the midges in their larval form down the sediment. We did a test project. Dr. Kevin Brittingham from our office worked with the state and with Sam Weaver to do that by boat. In November of last year, we got helicopter applicators to do a proof of concept. They donated their time and effort, along with the Larvicide Company Valant Biosciences donated their product to test 60 acres of Back River to see if we could apply the larvicide by helicopter. Then that was very successful. And at the urging of the county executive and the county administrative officer, we are now pursuing an additional program to apply this BTI to 1,200 acres of Back River. I believe the applications, it's a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. So the state is committed to matching funds for two years. They will be paying half of the cost for the next two years. We will be applying it approximately every four weeks, depending upon winds and tides and results. We do testing before we apply it to see what the mid population is. We apply the larvicide and then we test afterwards to see how it affects it. We anticipate applying this product probably five to six times each year for a total of about 1,005, I mean, 1.5 million. The cost is 250, approximately $250,000 per application, again, which will be split with the state. So 125 on our end each time. The total is about $1.5 million per year. And we hope to be able to really significantly affect the lives of the people up and down the river and certainly the businesses. Local businesses would benefit from this. So that's the program. And we're working on a MOU with the state that our Office of Law has approved and we're going to be sending to the county administrative officer for signature. But Secretary Barton Felder has committed in writing to providing funds for the first two years of this program.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marx?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Lykens, your department. I want to acknowledge the partnership of Governor Hogan and Secretary Barton Felder. When Councilman Crandall first started talking about this during a previous county executive's term, we didn't get any results. And I love the partnership that has developed that's making this a successful pilot program. Hopefully, we can see these efforts also improve the quality of the middle and bird rivers as well. Right, Councilwoman Evans?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall?
So I was, when I learned that this contract was going to be put before us, I was pleased. That's kind of an understatement. This has been a long, long saga. And as Councilman Marx alluded to, the previous administration did not have the political will to move towards any partnership with the state or really to address the issue. And this administration has, and I'm very thankful for that. Director Lykens, even though there wasn't the political will of the previous administration, he still put Kevin Brittingham on the case. And Kevin worked diligently, I think sometimes on his own own time and not even county time. I'm not sure of that. And worked with citizens like Sam Weaver and Karen Nguyen to get the science together so that we could continue to make our case that this was indeed an infestation and that something would, something really needed to be done. So today and the legislative session next week are the culmination of a lot of effort that has taken years. I first learned of the issue in 2013 when no one was paying attention to us and no one was paying attention to Mr. Weaver, who was trying to get the ear of anybody that could listen to him. Since then, the infestation has spread throughout the river. It wasn't, it's not just an isolated spot on the Essex side of Back River. Mr. Brittingham, or Dr. Brittingham, if I'm not mistaken, he built a, built an app that people could, when they had a hotspot, they could go on the app and say, we have midges here today. And that effort as well led to the data that we needed to, as I said before, to make the scientific case that this was an infestation and it was affecting a lot of people in in various ways, a serious quality of life issue and an economic development issue. Again, very pleased that the contract is before us. And I hope that we have my colleagues on the council, hopefully we have their support on Monday evening to pass this contract. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
I just wanted to say, Councilman Crandall, we're very pleased that we have been able to work with the community. Secretary Barton Felder personally came and met with us, Mr. Lykens and his team. We too saw this as a huge issue that needed to be addressed for the citizens impacted. This is incredible. And we're very happy that we were able to move this along and very pleased, the education that we have received by working on this project with you all. So just want to acknowledge that the county executive and I and the staff, you know, see this as an urgent matter.
Well, I, thank you, Ms. Rogers. Any additional questions or comments from the members? I know that we certainly received an awful lot of information. It was a very I guess informative testimony from everyone when we were talking about the midgits? Midgits? I get it right sooner or later. I'm sorry. And so we can't see the effort moving forward.
Chairman, you have it till Monday evening.
After Monday evening. Okay. Let's just hope I, I'm always afraid when I say it, because if I say it wrong, I say it wrong, I mean, there'll be protests and all sorts of stuff will be going on.
Little bugs, little bugs.
Little bugs.
Little bugs.
Okay. All right. So good. We'll move right along. Enough of the, the travel more time. Midgits.
Midges.
Midges, got it.
Midges.
Midges.
Midges. Not to be confused with midgits.
No, no. I don't know if we can say that word. And little people, small people?
Little, little bugs.
Right along before I get myself in more trouble. Let's go to page 18, Ms. Andrea Walker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. The administration is requesting a third amendment to a contract with Tito's Contractors to continue to provide general and skilled labor services at our three solid waste facilities. Our eastern sanitary landfill, the central acceptance facility, as well as our western acceptance facility. This is to, this amendment is necessary to avoid an interruption in services as we require additional time to bid a new contract. The term for this current contract will end March 31, 2022. However, we are proposing that the amendment commence on April 1, 2022. And it shall be in effect for a period not to exceed the earlier date that we hope to get a new procurement in place are March 31, 2023. This amendment is an increase of 3.1 million to this contract that we have before you today. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. We certainly appreciate you stopping by today.
Thank you so much, sir.
Asking for 3.1 million. Okay, we move right along to page 22. The Savitria Peoples, Special Assistant to the Chief Administrative Office.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, members of the county council, participants and guests. The administration is requesting the approval of a contract with the Shaffer Center for Public Policy at the University of Baltimore. This is to provide professional facilitation services to the Baltimore County Blue Ribbon Commission on Ethics and Accountability, which was established by the county executive through Executive Order Number 2021-025. The commission is tasked with reviewing Article 7, Public Ethics in Open Government, and Article 4, Title 14, Office of the Inspector General of the Baltimore County Code, along with policies and business processes that govern public ethics and open and transparent government. The contractor will provide facilitation support to the commission, conduct research as needed to support the commission's work, and assist with the drafting of the commission's draft and final report. This will include a web-based anonymous ethics climate survey of Baltimore County employees, officials, and members of boards and commissions, and a best practice study regarding the operation of offices of inspectors general. The total compensation amount of this contract is 99,392. The contract will commence upon council approval. The work is anticipated to be completed by December 31, 2022. Thank you very much for your time. Ms. Rogers and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall?
I guess I'm confused by this. I'm not quite understanding why we have to hire a consultant.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer if you'd like.
Councilman Crandall, you ready for answer there or was that?
Yeah, sure.
Well, Councilman Crandall, we need to ensure that it is a independent process. The county executive wants to ensure that everything is done in a independent, transparent process with a third party, neutral third party, so that the commission can conduct this work independent from the administration, so that we have feedback from the, a neutral position.
What is the challenge that the commission is undertaking?
The commission is, as its peoples reflected, looking at our operational, working relationship with the inspector general's operation. There are two pieces here. Number one, when the original office was established, the business processes, protocols, et cetera, were on an Office of Ethics and Accountability. And then the office evolved to the Office of the Inspector General. We need to ensure that how we operate and how we interface is in a manner that is with best practice. You are aware that modified legislation was submitted and the county executive pulled that back and he made the statement when he appointed, well, when he submitted and issued an executive order so that we could convene a Blue Ribbon Commission on Ethics and Accountability. The Shaffer Center is the facilitator for that, that Blue Ribbon Commission. And at the end of that process, they will provide us with recommendations, operational recommendations, any changes that need to be made and give us better guidance on our operations and interface to ensure that we are operating appropriately. That's what the charge of the Blue Ribbon Commission in, under the facilitation of the Shaffer Center will do.
Right. I guess I just, I'm having trouble with this because this is not the only inspector general's office in the United States. They are all over the place. So why are we having such a challenge figuring it out where we have a Blue Ribbon Commission? I gotta, I have to wonder how blue ribbon is it if we have to hire a consultant? And then we're why not just take best practices where the inspector general's office in other municipalities are already established? I'm not quite understanding why it's such a sort of a thought process to figure this out.
Well, I guess the goal is always in what is considered the best practice. I'm guessing that's the goal. So are we reinventing, are we reinventing what the inspector general's office does? I mean, I just don't, I don't get it.
No, so we're not reinventing it, but as with any benchmarking process, which we do on a regular basis, because that is the best process, best practice is to benchmark. But the county executive wants to take a comprehensive look at how we interface, because every inspector's general office operates a little differently. And yes, we have benchmarked, well, Ms. Madigan has benchmarked with various offices of inspector general. But at the end of the day, the county executive wants to ensure that we have a good working relationship and ensures from a neutral standpoint, we're not reinventing. We would like the experts and those who serve on the Blue Ribbon Commission on Ethics and Accountability are listed in the executive order. The executive order was issued some time ago, but we want to, we want to get it right. We want to make sure that we are operating here in Baltimore County with the inspector general and to get it right.
Okay. Chair, I'm complete on this.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions or comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, who is on, what individuals are on this Blue Ribbon Commission?
Hold on one second. I will pull that for you. They are reflected, it's reflected in the executive order that Mr. County Executive. Savitra, do you have our list of individuals in front of you?
I can add to that. Judge Joseph Murphy, Joanne Antoine with Common Cause, Judge Kathleen Cox, former county circuit court judge, Thomas Glancy, a member of the ACLU or the Board of Directors of the ACLU, and William Johnson, former inspector general for Maryland Department of Human Resources, John Laria, Esquire, managing partner of the law firm of Ballard Spar, and Cindy Leopard, Esquire, Chair of the Baltimore County Ethics Commission.
Well, that's quite a list. I was curious.
And Joseph Murphy was the chief judge of the Maryland Court of Special Appeals, as well as a circuit court judge during his career.
Who are independent entities that we believe can look at how we operate, assess, you know, and benchmark with other inspectors generals, office operations, and interface with the governments or the entities that they serve and give us feedback on our operation.
Who staffs the Blue Ribbon Committee now?
No one. The committee hasn't started their work. That's why we want the University of Baltimore Shaffer School of Public Policy to do so. The CE wants an independent, neutral process.
So we don't have anyone who works for Baltimore County that would be able to research all the county laws dealing with these two issues and let the commission know what exactly the present law requires. And secondly, we don't And secondly, we don't, I noticed that this University of Baltimore would also set the agenda of this Blue Ribbon Commission, and they also would make recommendations.
The chair, Councilmember Catch, the chair would set the agenda. The University of Baltimore is the facilitative staff that works on behalf of the commission, as all of the commissions have done. They don't, the University of Baltimore does not set the agenda. The chair and the members review information and set the agenda.
That's not what some of the write-off says, but that makes a lot more sense.
That's how it operates.
Okay, I, listening to who's on this commission, I would think they'd be able, I mean, what an illustrious group of people. They would be able themselves to take a look at the current Maryland county law and Maryland law. And then, you know, I would suspect that the Blue Ribbon Commission could come up with recommendations without the need for, see, I don't, I understand that this would be an independent party, but you don't, there's no county employees or, you know, anybody on that commission that would be associated with county government today. So I would think that they would be able to actually do what is in the orders for the Blue Ribbon Commission without hiring the, this group from the University of Baltimore. Are we, what is really the purpose of this Blue Ribbon Commission? Is there a problem that we're trying to solve?
I don't want to say it's a problem, Councilmember Catch, but let me, let me, before I go, before I answer that, let me just discuss the Blue Ribbon Commission's structure that the county executive has embraced in a lot of our work. It takes a lot to have thoughtful deliberations, to do research. And in each of the structures, even going back to the transition report. In the transition report development, there was a transition team. Then we had the fiscal accountability work. Staff from the county staffed these entities. In some of our work, we engaged, you know, entities to help guide the work. The work of the Solid Waste Work Group. We had a facilitative group that helped us gather information, research, get the appropriate presenters, so that the model is the same. But the difference here, and I think this is the county executive's desire, is to have neutrality, third-party process with respect to this effort. And having a academic institution with the background and experience in conducting facilitative types of activities of this nature, or, you know, it was competitively led, a request for, was led. But the issue here is the neutrality. The county executive wants a third-party entity to do what government employees would typically do. Commissions don't run themselves by any stretch of the imagination.
Chair, can I bring up something? No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It was such, it's such an illustrious group of individuals. I'm just surprised that, I mean, I would say they're neutral.
They are, but they can't be expected to do staff work.
And there is no one that, any county employee or attorney that you would feel, that could do a neutral.
The county executive has requested that it be independent from government operation. He wants a neutral, you know, you know, level playing field, that there's just neutrality with respect to the entire process.
What are we, is there a problem that we're trying to solve?
The county executive wants to look at our working relationship and the structure by which there are questions about procedural, operational types of things that the county executive wants to ensure that it is done in a neutral environment. I'm not going to say there is a problem. But again, if you look at the evolution of the office, the office was established as a office of ethics and accountability under one piece of legislation and one intent. And then the office evolved into an office of inspector general that has the Ethics Commission as a part of it. If you look across, even here in Maryland, let alone the country, there are different iterations of that, whether the Ethics Commission is within or whether the Ethics Commission sits outside. There are lots of operational procedural pieces that we want to ensure, do we have a best practice operation? There are those kinds of questions. That's what I'm saying. I don't view this as a problem. I view this as an exercise to ensure we have thoughtfully gone through the process. Because you went from one, when you established the office, to another entity without looking at that operational relationship. And so that's not a problem. That's taking a step back, making sure that we operate, that we're operating together effectively. And the CE wants to do that in the most neutral environment that he can. That's why we are requesting a private, independent facilitator as opposed to staffing it within the government.
The legislation that the council passed that established the Office of IG, who drafted that legislation? Was that our county staff or, I mean, council staff? Or is it from the administration? And is there some problems with it?
I can't say that there are problems with it, but we went from one operating environment to a second operating environment. And this is an opportunity to see, are we operating best practice based on what is out there in operation? Because there's different operating environments. If you look at each and every, just here in Maryland, Baltimore City operates differently than we do. Montgomery County operates differently than we do. The IG for Education operates differently than we do. A operation that's very similar to us, Cuyahoga County, Ohio. You know, from a benchmarking standpoint, we are, Ms. Madigan and I work closely together on a range of things, particularly on ethics and accountability, because this is both. We're looking at the Office of the Inspector General, and we're looking at our ethics and accountability work. So I'm not going to say there is a problem that we're trying to solve. We're trying to take a thoughtful look at our operation because we started out as one thing, and now the office is an IG office when it initially was established as an Office of Ethics and Accountability, which are really two different kind of operations. And we did not pause in the middle to have that discussion and looking at that, the operational nuances between two entities that the two pieces of legislation stood up or enabled.
I'd like to ask Mr. Boswick or Mr. Phillips, did you draft this legislation that established this office? Or was it from the administration?
Mr. Catch, the initial bill to establish the Office of Ethics and Accountability was an administration bill. Then I believe the legislation that sort of revised that into, or evolved it, as Ms. Rogers indicated, into the Office of the Inspector General, I believe was lobbied by Ms. Madigan and, I think, was a council bill.
Did, when you drafted that legislation then, did you have a chance, opportunity to look around the country to see how other offices were set up and what their responsibilities were, et cetera?
Well, we did not make any substantive changes to the initial legislation that the council passed. That was the administration bill. So we literally just, you know, made non-substantive changes to the name and nomenclature of the office. So we did not do that analysis because what we were doing was just changing the name.
But see, that's the rub right there. The operation is different. An IG's operation is a different operation than an Office of Ethics and Accountability. And now we have them, you know, merged, these processes merged together. So that's what I'm saying. It's not the notion of fixing a problem. It's determining, are we operating, you know, with best practices? Because there are two different operations. Now they're one and in the same. And how an IG's office operates and interfaces, there are procedural things that we want to look at to make sure, or we want the Blue Ribbon Commission to look at and make sure that we're operating with best practice and that this joint endeavor that brought these functions under one umbrella, but now it's the Office of the Inspector General, that it's functioning with best practice, is what I'll say. So it's not a problem fixing, if you will. It's the understanding of the operation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Did you say Beavens?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand what Ms. Rogers is saying, but I would just like to throw my two cents in and say, why would anybody have a problem with checks and balances of an agency? We have checks and balances for almost every agency, for every agency in the county. We answer to the taxpayers. Ms. Madigan answers to no one. So I think particularly, her office should have checks and balances to make sure that these procedures and policies are where they are supposed to be. For instance, I've had questions for the IG before, and she has said, oh, I didn't know. I didn't know that was the practice. I didn't know to ask somebody. So like anyone else in a position new in a county and not knowing every single policy in place, I just don't know why there would be any pushback on having checks and balances for somebody, especially when it's an independent committee being put together that's not costing the taxpayers. It's not costing taxpayers, correct, Rogers?
Well, the work of the committee, no, these are volunteers are going to come to us. But they can't be expected to do one hundred percent of the work by themselves.
Right. I get that, but I'm just saying, it's really at no cost to the taxpayers. And everybody keeps talking about transparency. And I just say there should be checks and balances for everyone in the county, including the inspector general. That's all.
Councilwoman, there is a cost. There's a fiscal note on this contract.
Yeah, that is.
Councilman.
I'm talking about the volunteering, though. I'm talking about the committee and that volunteer hours and the stature of these people, you know, judges and ex-judges and things like that, giving of their time and talents.
Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Thank you. I know that the membership of this task force was decided several months ago. Can you remind me again the name of the Common Cause representative?
Uh, I will have to get that name for you. Who of those on the list?
It's, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's Joanne Antoine, executive director. Okay, very good. Who is the representative from the American Civil Liberties Union of Maryland? It's not the ACLU per se, Mr. Marks, but it is Mr. Glancy. Thomas Glancy is a member of the Belsky, Weinberg, and Horowitz Law Firm and president-elect of the Board of Directors for the ACLU of Maryland's Public Justice Center.
Very, was very thoughtful and tried to be as inclusive Councilmember Marks. If you look, it was well-balanced. And Ms. Madigan received the names of the recommendations. She, I provided her with the names of the recommendations.
No, I get that. And I'm going to pick my words very, very carefully here. I had an excellent experience with the Common Cause when we were doing our public financing bill. I really appreciated their truly neutral and thoughtful conversations with Common Cause. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, let me, thank you, so that we can move on.
Mr. Chair, just.
Well, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's no question that this Blue Ribbon Commission is well-qualified. I think if you look at the list, it's a very august group and well-qualified. Ms. Rogers, the county executive appointed this commission in October. And as I'm understanding, the commission has not met, or they haven't, they have met?
They have not met as a group to begin their work. The administration has dialogued with them to prepare for the work. But we had to procure the service for the facilitation because that was the direction that Mr. County Executive wanted us to go, a neutral facilitator. You well know that in the fall of the year, we went back into an upsurge with the pandemic, which put a lot of pressure on procurement in terms of emergency purchases, et cetera. And it takes time to procure things in the government under normal conditions. So that is the reason why. We had to go through the process of developing it, putting it out, you know, responses, then negotiations. That's just how procurement works.
Understood. So I just was, A, trying to understand the urgency of it. And secondarily, so the group has not met, so they didn't, they didn't get together and say, hey, we need someone to facilitate our meetings. We need staffing. This is the county executive saying, this is what you need.
This is the county executive handling the process the very same way we've handled every other Blue Ribbon Commission, either internally or with a facilitative group. Because as you Because, as you know, we we had a facilitative group in our work in our solid waste work group. We've received support and technical assistance for the fair housing work. We didn't have a facilitator, but that put the work back on. Again, Mr. Vetter, the directors. There there is a a process to having the these additional efforts, this this thoughtful efforts. And this is something that the the county executive is wedded to, having external input. But in this one, and I'll say that his request is very thoughtful because it presents neutrality. It's it's not me. It's not anybody in the administration. It's a group of experts in this area with a recognized organization that does this kind of work. And it is an investment that we believe is essential for us to ensure that we have a best practice operation.
Well, let me let me jump in here and bring this to an end. It's certainly been a very thoughtful conversation. Let me just say, I don't even remember how much money we're going to spend on the helicopter to kill the bitches.
Bitches.
I don't. I think we just talked about $3.1 million to provide labor to the landfill. And we we talk about these big numbers each and every day. And now that it comes to providing a commission to make sure that our employees are being treated fairly and that the processes that are in place to investigate waste, fraud, and abuse is the best processes we can find. All of a sudden, we have issues with $99? $99,000? Come on now. Come on. Let's think about what we're talking about here. Let's think about it. It doesn't hurt any of us to spend $99,000 for someone to facilitate a commission of distinguished volunteers to make sure that our Office of Inspector General is operating under the very best practices and policies we can find. And I don't see an issue with that at all. And I'm really curious about the 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 questions as to why we all of a sudden have an issue. Furthermore, as it relates to the members on the commission, I would recommend that we find an employee representative, maybe a member of a local union to stand there and talk about employees' rights while we're looking at what is the best practices. If I didn't hear any employee representative there or anybody that would be looking out for employees.
Mr. Chair.
Rogers, I'll give you the last word.
Okay.
And then we're moving on.
The county executive would like this to be an independent process. That's why there are no county representatives on the on the the commission. There are, we we want an independent facilitator, so it's neutral. That's why there are no representatives from county government for for the participating in this effort. And we kindly request the council's support so that we will have the quality of facilitation needed to support this Blue Ribbon Commission to do their work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I could just.
We find a employee representative from some other jurisdiction. That would work. Who else? Who who gets it? Some really fast.
Councilman Petoka has a question.
Really fast, so we can move on.
I was just wondering if it is possible to have this commission who brings together, because of how well qualified they are, tremendous resources from the firms that they represent. If it's possible for them to have an initial meeting, identify what their needs are outside of the resources that they bring to the table, and then come back to the council and say this, the commission that was appointed five months ago has now had a meeting, has it has had its initial meeting. And they've identified need A, B, and C. And we would like the county, the county to address those needs and resources for the commission to do the best work possible for the citizens of Baltimore, of Baltimore County.
All due respect, Councilman Petoka, the county executive has put together a plan. They already made their plan. We're not here to rework their plan. What we're here to do is approve the $100,000 for them. But they already presented a plan. And like I said before, I don't think this money is ill spent at all. Because if we're going to have an Office of Inspector General, what is the harm in making sure that we have the very best Office of Inspector General we can find? What is the harm in that? And if they need a facilitator, give them the facility. It's not the first commission we've had. And by the way, let me just say one more thing before we move on. Ms. Peoples, is this your first time coming before the council? Is this your first time?
Indeed, indeed, it is.
Well, I'm here to tell you, you did a most excellent job. I thought your presentation was very thoughtful and thorough and very articulate. We heard it. We got it. And thank you so much and welcome. And hopefully, this won't be the last time we see you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one last question.
Councilman Petoka? No. Save your question. We've heard enough questions.
It relates to budget as as to whether it's in the Inspector General's budget or the county executive. Where does it? Where is it placed in the budget?
It's in it's in the general budget. It is not in this does not negatively impact the Inspector General's budget at all. We identified available funding for this budget. I believe that it it is going to be, if approved by the council, will be charged to OOL. Because we had available funding.
Because we'll be reviewing the budget shortly, and I I wanted to know which bucket this.
But this is FY22, Councilwoman Petoka. So this is not a FY23 expenditure. This is FY22. And had we been able to get through the procurement process timely, we would have started this work. But again, as I share with everyone, we have been handling regular work and battling a pandemic that had a resurgence that none of us could have anticipated.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
And I'm sorry if I'm short with everyone. Are there any more questions about the $100,000 expenditure to hire a commission to facilitate a commission to make sure that we have the very best Office of Inspector General power? Is there any more questions or comments? I want to make sure that everybody have their opportunities.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Councilman Catch.
Yeah, with Councilman Beavens, I certainly agree with what she had to say about checks and balances. My only point is that I have full confidence in this commission that they don't need this independent party because I have confidence that they can be very objective. So that that's just the point I'm trying to make.
And and Councilmember Catch, I can I can appreciate that. But I'll say, having served on as a volunteer member of various review committees and things like that, it takes a lot of work. And it's a bit much to ask people of this caliber who have many of them who who are are employed to come up with their own scheduling of meetings at researching information, all of all of these pieces. And we've done this for every other commission work group and committee since the outset of the the County Executive's Transition Report. I'm I'm at a loss for why we wouldn't want to give the same kind of support to such an important endeavor. As the county administrative officer, I'm at a loss for for that because we're just applying the same process. All we're doing is asking that that we get an external facilitator to meet the county executive's desires to have a totally neutral process. In some of our instances, like I said, we took on the work inside the government. And guess what? That's more work on top of our work. It's not easy. It's us working at night, trying to do our regular work when we're staffing commissions or or work group. It takes a lot of work to do substantive work like this. And I don't think we should shortchange ourselves when we've given that same kind of consideration to every other group that we've stood up. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. Peoples. You did a most excellent job. I'll thank everybody for their conversation and comments. Next, we'll move on to page 25, Mr. Hickey.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Hickey.
Good evening, members of the council. I usually get to speak on appropriations here on a contract this evening. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Cash Campaign of Maryland to provide free tax preparation services for approximately 200 low to moderate income county residents and to connect households to other resources. The contract commenced August 1, 2021, will conclude July 31, 2022, and may be extended an additional 90 days. The maximum compensation under the agreement is $60,000 for the entire period, including the extension. These funds are part of a vital economic recovery effort to ensure that local residents have access to recovery funds that may require that they file their taxes. As many of the council members know, a number of individuals and families didn't file their 19 or 20 tax returns during the pandemic. There was also a Dorothy of Free Tax Programs that operated in the middle of COVID. Cash is well known for the work in this space. It's estimated that approximately $400,000 in federal refunds and tax credits and another 120,000 in additional state tax credits could be realized by families that have access to these services. And in addition, Cash's case managers will connect low-income clients to other resources such as affordable bank accounts, public benefits, financial education, and coaching. We started working with Cash Campaign, obviously, well before the pandemic. But during the pandemic, we started with a no-cost MOU. Cash essentially volunteered to do benefit screening for folks. When there were all, remember the original pandemic benefits that were confusing to folks, they helped provide navigation for those calling 311. Later, the council appropriated two different grants that we were able to get competitively from a national foundation to cover some of the work being done by Cash Campaign. It was then that we realized that there were gaps in the ability to provide tax prep services, just as things were really getting intense for county residents. So we negotiated, this was a non-competitive emergency agreement based in part on the intent to get this work done during a brief tax window, to get filings done. And also with a realization, this is one of the only nonprofit groups in the state doing this work. So I will leave it there and ask if the council has any additional comments or questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hickey. I guess we're okay with the 60,000. We'll move on to item number page four, Mr. Lawrence Richardson.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and members of the council. The administration is seeking a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $52,258. The supplemental appropriation is for our National Suicide Prevention Hotline transition to the 988 Lifeline Call Center. The purpose of the funds will be to prepare for additional staff to meet the anticipated need and anticipated increase in calls that will come with the transition to the 988 Lifeline Call Center. The 988 Lifeline Call Center will address behavioral health crisis calls and link individuals to the appropriate behavioral health services. The affiliate Sante Group is the contracted vendor for Baltimore County's Crisis Response Program, and it operates our local suicide prevention hotline. So affiliate Sante will take these funds to prepare for this change in the 988 line and to hire additional staff and provide overtime costs for staff with the anticipated increase in call volume. The the grant period is from September 1 through June 3 of 2022. The FCC has designated 988 as a new nationwide, easy-to-remember three-digit number. And the national operational rollout of the 988 is due by July 16 of 2022.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. We have a question from Councilwoman Beavens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Richardson. I think you may have already answered my question. My question was going to be, how are we going to advertise that there's a new number for people in trouble to call? And is that going to be part of the nationwide rollout?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? I mean, this is 52,000 on the table. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Now we move on to page seven, Mr. Gutwold, Weed Control, Bill 1622.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Bill 1622 is one of the many different pieces of the puzzle in reimagining code enforcement. It is essentially designed to be a little more proficient in our process from complaints to complacency regarding tall grass and weeds. It does one of three things. It lowers the threshold for compliances from 12 to eight inches. That is typical from best practices around the state, not only is it a state, but the country. Clarifies the finding, the finding structure after repetitive fines have been established. And it also allows the department to proceed with abatement, issue work orders without a notice of correction, which is we do have that ability in a number of different parts of the code, particularly in zoning. We're adding that to this part of the of the code for new nuances. I want to be clear that the intention is not to to penalize any specific, you know, any homeowners having a bad month. This is dealing with a lot of our typical absentee property owners where we have a consistent and knowledge of continual high grass locations in the in the county to allow us to to deal with those in a more proficient manner, an efficient manner, I should say. Some of the other things that have been going on is that we, as you've done in the past recently in in council, we've increased the number of contractors from three to seven that we have now on call to deal with these issues of tall grass and weeds. And we also are doing a lot of education and outreach in our in our code enforcement to help people understand what are the rules and regulations. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Grant.
Well, first a comment. Will someone please get Mr. Gutwold something to hang on his wall behind his desk?
I I will have this by Monday. I will have something there on Monday.
All right. You can come to my office. You come to my office. I'll let you borrow one of my things if you want.
Councilmember Crandall, he has something. He has his wagon wheel.
That's right.
On our emblem, which is our Integrated Matrix Management wagon wheel operating. I'm honored that his wagon was on the wall.
As substantial as that may be, I think I was looking, maybe looking for such a little larger. I don't know. Anyway, so Mr. Gutwold, you, I think you alluded to this in your presentation. And I hope I didn't miss the answers to this, but you you talked about the speeding up the time from complaint to action. Does this, I didn't quite get how this bill would would do that or what the thinking is there. Could you help me out?
Things it it, when we have identified a violation, the reduction in the height will allow us to start that process earlier. Sometimes we get out there and it's not meeting the foot distance. But the biggest thing is allowing us to go straight to a work order when we have a repetitive offender or a known, you know, typical site. So right now, we have to go through the process of notifying them, giving them seven days. Then we have to issue the work order and all that good stuff. So that takes up from two to four weeks sometimes. And then, and this allows us to go straight to a work order and get scheduled, get the contractor scheduled to go out there when we're dealing with a property that this is the third or fourth time we've been out there to cut the grass. So it will probably save two to four weeks in time in some of these properties. Because I know some of your constituents get upset because it takes us up to four to six weeks to get the grass cut, you know?
Yeah, that's been an issue. You and I have discussed this in in the in the past, sure. You and I have discussed this in, in the, in the past, sure. Um, so I, I think that is a, uh, that's a good thing. It, as far as, uh, if we, if the county has to procure, uh, the services of a contractor to go out and cut the grass, uh, the cost for that is the, is the homeowner or the property owner then billed?
Yep. We put a lien on the property. So this, the other thing that allows us to do is not to, we can also, currently we don't, we don't find them because we want to be able to go straight to, you know, to, to our work order. We have, if we cite them, we have to wait 15 days for them, the appeal process for them. So we don't cite them right now. We, we actually go right to work order, we give them notification and we go right to work order. And the only thing that gets assessed to the property is the cost of cutting the grass. This allows us to also find them as well.
So, um, now what, what happens if they just choose not to pay? And we've, we, we've had that issue for years in the county.
So the next steps are if, if, if it accumulates, uh, to a large amount of money, I'm working with, uh, Mr. Director Blades, is we, if, if we can go to a tax sale, if, if the liens are, are reaching to a point where it's worth going to a tax sale. Um, even though they're paying the property owners, but they're not paying the, the, the lien, we, that's the next move we can do. Or the other piece that we're doing is, uh, taking them to, to district court. Uh, we just signed of, uh, an agreement with, uh, state's attorney. And now we have a deputized state's attorney who can take people in front of the, uh, the district court to file criminal charges against individuals. So there's a couple of mechanisms we can, we, we have. Um, but I want to be clear that, you know, our objective is to get complacency. So, I mean, I'm also working with other departments as part of our wagon wheel, uh, namely Mr. Hickey, is he still here? Um, to help assist individuals who are having, they have financial woes, they have issues, uh, that we can help them, you know, get into compliance. We can, you know, provide services, they can do grants, uh, with our neglected property funds. If you remember that, establishing the neglected property funds, uh, to assist individuals in, uh, solving some of their problems and, you know, and, and grass cutting being one of them. So we got a couple of options at our, at our disposal.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Pope.
Mr. Gutwall, I have an old Jimi Hendrix poster. If you'd like to put it on your wall next to your wagon wheel.
Okay.
Just let me know.
All right, will do.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Marks.
I just want to publicly thank Adam Whitlock for the terrific work he is doing as Director of Code Enforcement. Uh, he is very, um, very, very responsive, uh, so is his staff. And I, I just want to acknowledge that publicly.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. And while we are in the acknowledging phase, I would also like to tell you, uh, Director Gutwall, don't you change, don't you change a thing because you are doing a fantastic job. You're very responsive to me and, uh, the constituents that I send you away. And I thank you so much. And if it means that your walls are going to remain there because you're too busy working for the citizens of Baltimore County, so be it.
I agree with what you said too. Yeah.
And, uh, I guess we'll move on if there's no more questions or comments. And I guess we'll move on. Where are we going to go now? Round and round and round we go. Where we start? Oh, Chief Hyatt. Happy to see you, Ms., uh, Chief Hyatt. You'll go to Bill 14 dash 22.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Jones and council members. I'm here tonight and I also have Acting Legal Director Meg Ferguson with me to present on Council Bill 1422, which would make updates to Baltimore County's existing statute that relates to the abatement of nuisance, of public nuisances. I do want to note that the administration is requesting that the council vote to delay the bill for two weeks so that the amendments can be drafted and presented at the next work session on April 12th. Um, however, if it's okay, I'd still like to speak a little bit about the legislation today.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. The current statute allows for the chief of police to order the discontinuance of a public nuisance on the affected premises or the closing of the premises to the extent necessary to abate a public nuisance if within a 24-month period violations have occurred on that premises that have resulted in two or more criminal convictions. And, um, before such a closure could occur, the premises must be provided written notice of a hearing which occurs before the county administrative officer, who then makes the final determination. Unfortunately, the statute as it currently exists is not usable for addressing the issues that we're currently confronting in Baltimore County. And the threshold of two or more criminal convictions really allows the small number of irresponsible businesses within our communities, literally gives them months or even years of continued criminal activity before the current law can be applied. We know that the overwhelming majority of the business owners within Baltimore County are hardworking, upstanding members of the community. And my department has had countless positive interactions with businesses that operate responsibly within the framework of the law. Uh, they're cooperative and are shared efforts to fight crime and to help keep residents safe in the community. Unfortunately, there is a very small number of establishments that not only don't abide by safety guidelines, but they blatantly violate the law and impact the health and wellness of surrounding communities. Frequently, these chronic violators work off the grid and literally operate without licensees or in pop-up party establishments where we have seen violent crimes, including shootings repeatedly occur. Uh, there's one particular example that occurred in 2021 with an establishment in Baltimore County which was required to close at midnight. Uh, March 21st of 2021, we had an incident at 3:00 AM while the business remained open. Three hours after it was due to close, the shots fired in the parking lot. Then March 27th, just a few days later, a, a vehicle arrived with guns inside of it, causing people to run. And we had another incident. Um, and again, that was at 2:00 AM, two after, two hours after they were due to close. And then just a couple of months later, unfortunately, on May 16th, uh, there was a, a homicide that occurred right outside of that location. And again, that was at 1:51 AM when the establishment was not closed when it was supposed to be. And that's one example. And again, there are very few examples like this because most of our businesses are very, very compliant and work closely with us. And while there are existing enforcement tools for other agencies like code enforcement, the health department and the liquor board, it's simply not enough. Um, these few uncooperative businesses just pay the fines as a cost of doing business and they continue on as before. Uh, public safety leaders like myself really need a tool to address these community safety issues, particularly the repeated acts of violence. And the updates in this legislation will help give our police department this tool. Um, frankly, we're, we're out of options in addressing some of these violators. And that's why we need this law updated so that the provisions are actually usable. The legislation is introduced, replaces the standard of two criminal convictions within a 24-month period with a threshold of two police reports written in the regular course of business of a premises having been used for public nuisance activities. The proposed legislation would also specify public nuisance activities as including furtherance of a crime of violence, the illegal storage or possession of firearms, violation of the law relating to prostitution, manufacturing or distribution of illegal controlled dangerous substances, illegal gambling, storage or possession of stolen property, and adult entertainment that violates the county code licensing or zoning requirements. In the event that a recommendation would be made for a closure, the administrative officer would hold a hearing to consider the severity of the violations, the efforts made by the establishment to follow safety and security recommendations made by the police department, the history of prior violations, and the impact of those violations on community safety and security. And even if a business were ordered to close, they would still have the opportunity to appeal a decision. Over the last several weeks, the administration has been working with communities and business leaders to ensure that this legislation meets the needs for a better enforcement mechanism without leaving upstanding businesses at risk of potential overreach. It's critically important that we avoid that. Uh, during our conversations, we've found, found some places where the legislation can be improved or can be made clearer. And we are working with the business community to really negotiate a timeframe for how close together violations should occur to qualify for a Public Nuisance Act recommendation. Uh, one of the things we're examining is if that 24-month timeframe, which currently exists in the current statute, is really necessary for these purposes. We're also examining the best way to address the scope of the legislation. We are currently working on updated language that will clarify our intention to address violators who are actively involved in the housing of criminal activity or willfully neglecting to address such activity. We realize that the scope of the current bill, based on the statute already in existence, could actually inadvertently apply to cooperative and upstanding business owners who happen to have a crime occur on or near their property. And the administration is in the process of drafting amendments to make this distinction more clear. Uh, finally, you know, we're working on more clearly spelling out the procedures and the hearing timeline that would be in place when a premises has been recommended to close down. So these proceedings are fair and that due process is provided. While we've made significant progress towards consensus on all of these items, we have not fully completed the work and we don't want to rush into this. This is really important and we want to make it the best piece of legislation that we can. And that's why we are respectfully asking the council to vote to defer this legislation for two weeks. We do feel confident that by the next work session on April 12th, we will have a full set of amendments that address all the concerns that have been raised. And I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. But I'll, I'll just ask, um, are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
It's Councilman Mark.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Chief Hyatt, I want to thank you and the administration for the seriousness with which you have, um, approached this problem. One of my greatest frustrations is that we have worked so hard to revitalize the Lock Raven Boulevard Joppa Road corridor. And yet despite all of our efforts, and this is residents and community leaders and business owners, we have a Starbucks that shut down because of crime in that area. Uh, crime that was, in my opinion, directly related to nearby businesses. So I have some ideas, uh, on how to perhaps get this legislation over the finish line, uh, that I'll share with you and my colleagues. But I, I just want to thank you for pursuing this. It is, it is terribly important for those constituents of mine, particularly in the Lock Raven area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions or comments? I will, uh,
Chair.
Yes, Councilman Kent.
Oh, thank you. I just very quickly, I don't know if this is for the chief or, uh, Mr. Boswick or Mr. Phillips. What's the definition of illegal gambling?
Uh, I will certainly defer to the chief, but I don't know that there is a, a definition per se, um, in the bill.
So obviously we're going to be, you know, these are the things that we're very cognizant about. Um, you know, certainly i- if there were a permit or it was an establishment where, um, there were some type of gambling that were legal, that's not what we are, um, directing this at. Uh, but there are, as we've seen, some pop-up establishments that are not licensed, um, that are conducting illegal activity like gambling that is not permitted. And, um, that's really what this is directed at.
So, uh, you know, of course, we all know people who meet every Tuesday or Thursday, whatever for, you know, to, to gamble, basically. And we're not talking about huge sums of money in most cases. I mean, we're, we're not after them, right?
This is directed at establishments that would have this type of activity going on. And for example, there would be violence that was connected with it. Um, issues that were impacting public safety in the community.
Okay.
Councilman Cap, it sounds like your mahjong game is safe.
Good.
Uh, Chief Hyatt, I know you, you've been talking to, uh, various agencies. Have you talked to the Licensed Beverages Association?
Yes, sir. We have had conversation with them, um, I want to say maybe a week or so ago. So, uh, we, we definitely have been communicating with them as well.
Okay, I, I, I will join Councilman Marks in his comments in terms of, we certainly appreciate the, the leadership on the issue. And we certainly understand, uh, why, you know, additional tools are needed. I'd also know that, you know, we drive some fear in the hard work and establishment that really do a good job. But unfortunately, unfortunately, things happen beyond their control. And they are very fearful that they may end up losing their livelihoods and employees being out of, uh, out of work. But I'm sure you can understand their concern, right?
I, I can, sir. And frankly, that's part of the reason why we want the extra time because we want to be able to reduce the anxiety. Um, this is the, the, the responsible businesses that are trying to do the right thing, that are working with the police department. There are times that there may be things that occur, um, around their establishments, but that are not directly related to the, the business that they're running. Um, and, you know, part of the reason when we look at, um, the four points that I had noted, um, the severity of the violations, the efforts made to follow safety and security recommendations, the history of prior violations, and the impact of those violations on community safety and security is because we want to make sure that this is not targeting those businesses. And, um, that's why we really need that extra time. We need to make sure that it's very clear so that way we can put those businesses at ease.
So I guess the other question would be, um, I guess, how equitable will we be applying the law? Because I can tell you now, based on what I read thus far, and I appreciate your efforts to change it. We, we could probably close some schools. Uh, if, if the bar is two reports in two years and violence on or off for nearby the premises. But I, I suspect we wouldn't do such a thing. So I guess I worry about that. How equitable will we be applying this, this law to the various businesses and entities throughout Baltimore County?
Yes, sir. And, and look, I understand and I, I think that's very valid. And that's part of the reason why there are multiple checks and balances in this to make sure that regardless of, you know, who the police chief is, um, who sits in positions in the administration, that there are multiple points of checks and balances so that if someone disagrees or feels that there needs, it needs to move to another level, um, that there's the ability to do that. Um, this has to be fair, it has to be equitable, and it has to be done consistently. And part of this is reviewing the totality of the circumstances, right? It's not just because there was this one incident. It's because there was this one incident. And then when the police attempted to work with the entity, um, to give some simple recommendations, uh, they refused the simple recommendations. And maybe it was, you know, if they needed to close at, at midnight and they continued to stay open until 3:00 AM. And then we had to continue to pull police officers out of the community to essentially babysit that establishment, which has had to, which has had to occur multiple times. But, um, I, I share your thought with that. Um, and this only works if it's, if it's done fairly.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chief. Any additional questions or comments from the member? And by the way, I would like to, uh, tell you, Chief, I appreciate Ms. Ferguson taking the time, uh, to, uh, go over the bill with me and address, uh, my concern and listen to me. And I certainly appreciate the administration's willingness to make some changes as well. And I guess we will, there's no other questions or comments from the members. We will hear from some speakers who took the time to, uh, come here and testify. And we certainly hope they're still here. Uh, any questions or comments from the members? All right, Chief, we'll let them speak and of course give you, uh, time to, to, you know, follow up with your comments after they finish. Uh, I guess we'll start, uh, this podcast, though. We want to start with, uh, who's our first speaker?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, my apologies to the council members and panelists and attendees for not realizing that my microphone was unmuted. But you got, everyone got a little taste of what goes on in the background of my office while everything else is going on. Again, my apologies. Um,
Yes, Lady, we're talking about us.
Our first speaker is, uh, Jack Maloney. We did have a Nicholas Linehan who been unable to locate him on our attendee list, but I will keep on, uh, looking out for him. In the meantime, I'm going to call Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Jack Maloney. I am the legislative chair for the Licensed Beverages Association. I want to thank Chief Hyatt. We did have a meeting recently trying to expand upon a program where our licensees are more proactive with getting the police engaged at much earlier times. Not sure if everyone is aware, but in our business, anytime, any service of call to our establishments, the report is automatically forwarded to the liquor board. So over the years, we've, we've had some folks that were reluctant to call the police unless in their mind it was absolutely necessary. So I think the chief understood that we're trying to break that mold and, and be more proactive. Um, I think hopefully people rise. We are certainly in favor of the intent of the bill. But we're concerned a little bit about especially adjoining properties. I mean. We have some bad actors out here at some of the establishments that are just in the parking lot. And myself, I've been here for 33 years. If I had the church next door gave me permission in the past to clear the property, I or my partner would go over and, and move folks that were loitering. I haven't done that in 10 years. I don't have the energy or it's actually a fear factor now. These kids are not like they used to be. So I call the police and what we do is we log the call. I think the, the chief, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think they've agreed now to, on the report, note the fact that the licensee has reached out for help. We're not like, it's not a neighbor. We know there's a problem. So I just want to make sure we don't do anything that's going to. Put a fear of calling the police into a licensee's head where maybe had they called earlier, it wouldn't be quite the situation. That the officers have to encounter. Um, and, and to let you know how serious some of our members are. I know the chief is doing some research for us. We've actually had members who want to hire off-duty Baltimore County police officers in uniform. One gentleman even wants the car in front of his place because they're serious. They don't want this type of behavior. So. You know, I was happy to hear there were amendments coming. We certainly look forward to seeing what they are. But I would remind you that we are already subject to fine suspension and revocation at the liquor board. And I think what you'll find is, um, a lot of times when someone comes in new, they, they require cameras, lighting. And that's the kind of thing that we're hoping to do is to kind of get cooperation. So. I would hope that you would include us in any work groups that you have, looking at these amendments, because I think that, um. Hey, this isn't new to us. We're used to it. If there's a problem, whether it's our fault or not, there's a chance we could be called to the board. And, and, and in the boards, in defense of the board, a lot of these are dismissed. Some of them aren't brought, but a lot of dismissals are on these. But, you know, you still have to hire a lawyer. You still have the angst of awaiting the hearing. And, you know, even if you're found or it's dismissed, sometimes, you know, you might be at a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars for the lawyer. So, you know, we take this serious and we would just hope that we're included in any future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maloney. We certainly appreciate you taking the time to be here today and run upon established. Um, next speaker, Ms. Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is David Mister.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the, the council. I'm David Mister. Um, my firm is called Mr. Winner Bartlett. We have served as general counsel to Baltimore County Licensed Beverage Association since 1985. I will tell you in that capacity, I would have been involved in any kind of serious discussions about this padlock law with the police department. That hasn't happened in that context. I hope we will get the chance to do that. You don't know this about me, probably my background. I may have told the chairman this, but I come from a law enforcement background. I was an assistant state attorney in Baltimore County for six and a half years, prosecuted the most serious cases that we ever, ever came before, uh. The circuit court and district court in Baltimore County during those years. Uh, my son is a law enforcement officer in Virginia, so I'm very sympathetic to law enforcement. But on the same, uh, considerations, I'm very concerned legally about the aspects of this bill. Uh, honestly, I hate some of the proposals in it. I won't go for too long because I know that, uh, I could argue for half an hour if I was before the court. But I think there's concerns about constitutionality. I think the way it's drafted currently, it's void for vagueness. It denies substantive due process. Uh, I, I think it constitutes a taking of property without, uh, due process or fair compensation. Um, as was pointed out, there are some existing statutes that apply, including, uh, Maryland Code Real Property Article 14 dash 120. Which deals with, uh, uh, baitment of nuisances and actions for that. As Mr. Maloney said, and I have personal knowledge because I have either currently or in the past represented the majority of restaurants. And taverns in Baltimore County that hold alcoholic beverages licenses on a regular basis. My clients are summoned before the Board of Liquor License Commissioners, generally based upon a police report or two that has been filed. And I will tell you, in the majority of those cases, the board ends up taking no action. But my clients have had to pay me or other attorneys to defend them there. So this, the, the language here to say two police reports in the ordinary course of business, I'm sorry, that's not an adequate basis. And there needs to be better, um, factors articulated, perhaps at least a threshold of prima facie evidence. Um, and that's not happening. The, uh, the fact is, this is potentially damaging not only to my clients in, in the alcoholic beverages business. But I represent, uh, the majority of the large, uh, shopping center owners in Baltimore County. Particularly those that have alcoholic beverage licenses in there. They're very troubled also. This could have a very detrimental effect on them. Because if you close down one of their tenants for a year, they're gone. They're probably out of business. And of course, they've lost that, um, that revenue for that time period. As Mr. Maloney said, the liquor board currently has the, the power and authority to put people with alcoholic beverage licenses out of business. At least suspend them or revoke their licenses. And then if they try to sell alcohol, they'd be committing a criminal act and could be prosecuted for that. One of the things that really troubles me about the way the legislation is drafted. Everything that's being done is being done by the executive function. The chief of police works for the executive branch. The county administrative officer works for the executive branch. The, the, the administrative hearing office works for the executive branch. There's not even anyone until you get to arguably the administrative, office administrative hearings, that's even quasi judicial. Uh, in the existing nuisance, uh, ordinance, there's a right to an appeal to the circuit court. Under this bill, if I was representing a client and disagreed with the action from the chief of police, I would first have to go to the county administrative officer. And the expense of that for my client. If I didn't like that decision or my client didn't like that decision, we would then have to go to the office of administrative hearings. And if we didn't like that decision, we'd have to go, I believe, to the county board of appeals. And then maybe after that, I could actually get before a judge and the circuit court. All of those things cost money and are a tremendous burden on, on the, uh, business operators. And there's absolutely nothing in the statute that allows for a stay of the padlock while those appeals are being taken. I find all these things very, very troubling. And frankly, and again, as I said, I have tremendous respect for law enforcement. It was part of it for a long time. This is a classic example of this fox guarding the chicken house. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh. I, um. Don't think I have any questions.
I can ask a question, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Mark.
Uh, Mr. Um, Mr. Mister, I, I, I thank you. Um, thank you for offering to take some questions on this. Um. I certainly understand your concerns. Uh, what would you think if this was repurposed into a pilot program? Uh, similar to what we did with the social host ordinance in Towson, where a few, uh, of the most egregious areas. Uh, were, were part of the pilot program and there was a, perhaps a sunset provision after two years. What would be your thoughts on that?
Um, Councilman Marks, uh, certainly would be better than what we have. And I think it would, uh, facilitate what Chief Hyatt says about wanting to only identify and penalize those who are the worst actors. Because as I think even the, the chief has admitted here, if you apply this by the express language of the ordinance, it can affect virtually anyone. And for something that's not even what we would all consider to be, uh, obnoxious or criminal behavior. Um, so that's, I think, a start. I also think, uh, Councilman, that it would be better if we got. A judicial involvement sooner. There's too many layers here of executive authority. And I, I think we should be able to get to a court as early as, as possible. And also there should be a threshold of evidence, not just two police reports in the ordinary course of business. You could have a, a, a competitor or a neighbor, somebody who just doesn't like the business or likes the people. Maybe doesn't like their race or their religion. They can, could repeatedly be calling the police and the police will dutifully make a police report. As I think Mr. Maloney alluded to, right now, the policy in practice, and it's been this way since as long as I've been practicing alcoholic beverages law on a regular basis. Which is back in 1984, 85, when Dutch Hooper's Burger and I started together doing that. They send a police anytime, anybody makes complaint, even remotely close to an alcoholic beverage licensed business, their parking lot. Um, or outside or anything like that, the police are instructed to send a copy of that report to the liquor board, to make a report and send a copy to the board. So I'd like to see something in there that requires at least some sort of prima facie showing that there's likely to have. You know, th- this nuisance was committed or crime was committed, um, et cetera. I, I understand the thrust might be controlled dangerous substances, um, violence, et cetera, but the, the ordinance is much more far-reaching than that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think for me, the importance is to bring bad property owners into an arrangement with the police. To try to reduce these incidents. And as you correctly note, you have that with the liquor board, right? You, you have that collaboration and we don't have it in other situations. Yep. So thanks. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, your mic's off. Unmute.
Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Mister, for your testimony and, uh. Sharing some of your concerns on the bill. Next, we'll, uh, our next speaker, Ms. Castro.
Our next speaker is. Eric Rockwell.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Uh, Dave Mister stole some of my thunder and he's an attorney and I'm not. So I'm not going to try to expand too much on many of those legal tenants. But I would say just generally, I'm very heartened by the fact that this bill will be amended. Uh, this is certainly a complex and very difficult situation. And as a representative of community associations, I'm very sympathetic to the problems that can exist by some maverick businesses. Uh, but on the reading of this bill on my part, I came away with the conclusion that this was much too simplified. To deal with very complex problems. And just to throw out a couple of examples, I was really concerned about, uh, given the fact that there's an existing law. Whether this, uh, new bill that would be passed would be deemed to, uh, not serve due process for those accused. So that was definitely a concern. Secondly, I checked the county charter and looked at the, uh, description of the duties of the administrative officer. And I had no place in the county charter see that the administrative officer is called to act in such a judicial function. As this bill would, uh, pass on to the administrative officer. So there are just a couple right off the top of my head that are problems. And again, Mr. Mister, uh, qualified a lot of the problems, uh, much better than I could. But, uh, as written, I would ask the council not to approve this bill and I'd look forward to the amendments that will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Ms. Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Aaron Greenfield. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. Aaron Greenfield here on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. Um, we too have a number of concerns with the bill. I have spoken to, um, Joel Beller from the county executive's office and really appreciate the dialogue we've had to date. And I certainly appreciate, uh, what the, the police chief and the county executive are trying to do in pursuing really the small number of bad actors. But, uh, it really does unintentionally capture our industry amongst others. Uh, this bill as drafted would, as you know, allow the police chief to shutter in our instance, an entire multifamily community. If there are two police reports on the premises in a 24-month period. Even if the police report is unfounded, changes, charges were reduced, the case was null pros, or even defendant was acquitted. Uh, the premises could still be deemed a nuisance. Uh, this is hugely problematic, as you can imagine. Additional practical concerns include, uh, just the term, the definition of, in the existing law of premises. Um, with the, uh, the bill itself, again, uh, this could apply to an entire multifamily environment. Rather than just one unit under that existing definition of premises. For example, a 200-unit development could have a number of calls in a 24-month period. If premises isn't more precisely defined, the entire community could be captured and be deemed a nuisance. And what's worse, it could be shuttered for a year. Uh, the bill also, uh, mentions the, uh, those who engage in a crime of violence on or near the premises. Uh, we're not really sure what near means. Um, if a crisis, if a crime takes place on a public sidewalk, perhaps within a multifamily, uh, community. Or in a contiguous property next to a multifamily building, uh, and could be wholly unrelated to a tenant or to the property itself. Uh, the chief could still deem it a public nuisance and close the, the entire community for a year. Uh, the term, uh, police reports, Mr. Mister raised this and I think did a very, very effective job. Um, you know, as I mentioned initially, it doesn't, the bill does not account for false reports. Uh, ultimately no charges by the state's attorney or, or even a, a not guilty finding. Um, and, uh, you know, our, our concern too is when you close down even one unit, you're taking one unit. Of potentially affordable housing off the market by way of example. And then, uh, almost lastly, Mr. Chairman, um, there is a hearing before the chief, as, as you know. Um, however, uh, property owners in particular, or, you know, if there's, if it's petitioned, you can get a hearing before the police chief. The, the, the problem that property owners often have is they have great difficulty in obtaining police reports, statements and charges. Which often contribute to a lack of their knowledge, which in this bill is insufficient, is an insufficient defense under the bill. Uh, and when they do get those records, they're often le- often heavily redacted. So that presents, uh, really a due process, uh, problem unless we're provided that, uh, that charge information, et cetera. Uh, lastly, I, I did receive a, uh, reprinted bill from Mr. Beller, uh, with some of the amendments, uh, that the, the county executive was considering. And it does reference quote unquote, business activity in a much more narrow form. It still does not seem to exempt the multifamily industry, which is really, um, I know a tough request, but one that we, we don't feel like we're, we're sort of the target on this. At least we hope not. Uh, but look forward to really working with the police chief and the county executive's office to reach a, a good place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Greenfield. We certainly appreciate your comments and, uh. We thank you. Um, Ms. Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, Ms. Catherine Howard was our next speaker. She however, messaged me and said that she had a previous appointment at 6:00 PM and that she may not be able to, um, make it on. She does work with Mr. Greenfield, but I do still see her on here. So let me try her really quick. Ms. Howard?
Yes. Um, thank you very much. I'm, I will make my, my statement very short and sweet. Um, yes, Mr. Greenfield and I work together with the Maryland Multi-Housing Association and I'm general counsel for, um, a landlord that has county properties. By the name of Regional Management, Inc. We look forward to working with all the parties, um, along with Mr. Greenfield. We do share, um, very many of the same concerns that Mr. Greenfield has indicated to, um, the council. And, um, I, I figure that we will be seeing a lot more of each other, um, in the next two weeks. And with that, I thank you very much for letting me, uh, leave and thank you very much for letting me speak. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much, Ms. Howard. I, you know, Mr. Greenfield and Ms. Howard raised a very interesting scenario. And I guess for me, I'm, I'm just wondering like, how does that work? If I have friends over my house every Saturday night and we play poker and we have friendly wages and the, the neighbors complain and the police comment and noise too loud and somebody urinated across the street. And, and let's say this sort of thing happened, like, and you get to a point, how does it work? How do you, how do you put me out of my house? How does that work? Or am I reading this wrong? When Mr. Greenfield and them were talking about multifamily housing not being excluded?
Yes, sir, that's not directed at that. And I'm going to ask Acting Legal Director Meg Ferguson to just shed a little bit of light on that because she can be the most articulate about it.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The, the county administration is very cognizant of the, the special issues that, that relate to you having residential properties be covered by something like this. I want to emphasize that the, the padlock law is already in, in current county law and is, is completely broad, covers all kinds of premises and locations. The, at the chief's request, the administration is pursuing this bill to make the padlock law usable in those very small number of situations where I think everyone is going to, would agree that we need to be able to take steps to protect the community. In working on it and in, in having discussions with some of the speakers that, that have, have spoken this evening, you know, we've come to understand some of the issues with the current law that we hadn't really attempted to rework. And so we were in the process of working through that. As the chief said, the administration is already well along the way of, of working up some amendments that I think will solve some of these issues. But we need to have more discussion and probably hone them a little more. So not be overreaching into residences is, is something that is, is definitely the administration's aware of and we're working on how to do that effectively without giving up the needed, the benefit that we think we need to protect for protecting the community in cases where someone may use a residence for business. Right? These pop-ups that many council members were, have complained and asked for relief on. You know, we, we want to be sure we're able to effectively address them as well. But, but it is a work in progress. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So there is no scenario under the bill where you would cause somebody to vacate a home. Am I right or wrong?
Well, under the current, under the current law, you could. And under the bill as introduced, I think you also could. But we are looking at that specific issue and trying to make sure we land and land the plane in the right place.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the members or any further discussion or comments of Chief Hyatt? I guess
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to note just once again that I have tried to find Mr. Linehan on our list. He was our first original registered speaker. I have been unable to locate him, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, I, I thank the speakers for hanging in there. I know it's been a long afternoon and we appreciate everybody's participation. And your participation is what makes government work and educate us by presenting different scenarios that we may not have thought of. So we certainly appreciate and value your participation. Next, we'll move on to page eight, Bill 17-22, Mr. Boswick.
Please take it away. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Quark asked me to, to discuss the bill with the members. Bill 1722 seeks to establish a reporting requirement related to COLA and other salary adjustments that are part of the annual budget bill or other personnel or retirement system legislation. If the legislation or the bill would also have a fiscal impact on the employee's retirement system, the required notice from the Director of Budget and Finance at the time a bill is introduced would need to provide the projected salary cost, not only of the COLA itself to the budget, but must also advise the county council of any related costs, what could be termed secondary costs, such as increased operating budget contributions to the retirement system and the effect on the actuarial accrued liability of the retirement system stemming from that increase in salary cost. The bill also requires the actuary hired by the Retirement System Board of Trustees to include a schedule of annual employer contributions through the end of the adopted amortization period to identify the specific effects of any changes on the prior year schedule in the, in their annual valuation of assets and liabilities of the funds of the system, the retirement system. So basically, I mean, as everyone knows, Mr. Quark is a numbers guy. He, he's been leading the spending affordability committee, committee for years. And he has been concerned about the, that when there is a COLA, which is all well and good, that we also recognize there may also be costs to the retirement system that need to be known and dealt with potentially. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boswick. Any questions or comments from the members? Very none. I want to thank everybody for their participation today. And everybody have a great day and we'll see you next week. All right, thank you.